This conference will now be recorded.
Earl Grey tea, anyone?
Hello, this is Ike.
Hi Ike.
Okay, how you doing?
Hi Ike.
Hi Mike.
How you doing?
Hi Jane.
Hello.
Hi Jane.
Anybody want a stinky dog?
No, I don't.
Can you go back downstairs?
Key?
My audio is on, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Helen, do you want me to do roll call? Are you ready to get started?
I am ready. Is it seven? I wasn't even looking at the time.
It's six.
It is six.
Okay, I'll call to order. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Steph, if you could do roll call.
Councilmember Totino. Councilmember Griffin.
President.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Present.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson. Uh, councilmember Totino, did you join?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and Mayor Aronson, do we have you?
Okay.
Okay. We'll note that Mayor Aronson is absent and hopefully he'll jump on.
Okay. Thank you for joining us for our special public budget work session video view conference under conference call. At this time, I would like, I would ask that all participants mute their audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comments section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshohockenpa.gov. A member of the borough administration during public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during the remote meeting. Borough Council and administration, thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. So the first item on our agenda for the special meeting this evening under presentations is the 2021 budget presentation. Ms. Checo?
Thank you, President Leonard. This evening, we will be, I will be reviewing the 2021 budget process. And I apologize for the PowerPoint. I can't get the PowerPoint to play as an actual PowerPoint, so we're just going to go through each of the slides. But I, I think everyone, everyone can see the slides in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, great. So to start, um, we'll do an overview of the budget process, which is extremely efficient. We will review 2020 department accomplishments, provide an overview of the 2021 proposed budget, which will include an explanation of revenue sources, budget highlights and department goals. And then we will move into next steps in the budget process. So again, overall, the budget process this year was extremely efficient. In July of 2020, departments turned in capital budget requests and we reviewed council goals. We spent the months of August and September reviewing operational budget requests and having meetings to review those expenses. September, we held a special budget workshop with council. October was an administrative review of the 2021 budget. That was a draft. And this evening, I am presenting the proposed budget for 2021. On November 18th, I will ask council to consider authorizing to advertise the 2021 budget and the tax levy ordinance. And on December 16th, on your agenda will be to consider adopting the 2021 budget and the tax levy ordinance. So before I move into an overview of the proposed 2021 budget, I think it's important to reflect on the accomplishments from 2020 because that highlight the many services that the community receives as a result of their tax dollars. It also exemplifies that the borough works hard on a regular basis to provide quality service to its constituents. So I will go department by department, and these are just a compilation of certain highlights. So to start with the police department, they instituted policies and procedures to mitigate the exposure and transmission of COVID-19 while maintaining a high level of service. They incorporated Sergeant Lennon as a deputy emergency management coordinator, and they successfully facilitated multiple protests with no civil unrests, arrests, injuries, or conflict. Regarding the fire department, they underwent water rescue training. They introduced a new quint ladder truck into service. Their part-time firefighters were trained as both EMTs and paramedics. They implemented a QRS program in conjunction with Narberth ambulance. They combined fire station number 35 and number 36 to operate under one station number, which is now station number 55. They implemented DMV license checks on all fire personnel, and they received a fire grant to purchase additional PPE gear in the amount of $50,000. For the emergency management department, besides keeping people alive, safe, and healthy, they trained employees on first aid CPR. They fully utilized the Code Red system. They updated the Blaze Mark software program. They adopted COVID-19 policies and procedures throughout the pandemic. They developed daily meetings regarding COVID-19, which included emergency response teams, restaurants, businesses, construction sites, et cetera. And they successfully implemented a controlled environment for first responders and emergency management personnel. The Department of Public Services is made up of different divisions. So the Public Works Division is then broken out into four different divisions, which are buildings, sanitation, streets, and parks. So the Buildings Division, Division within Public Works continued to evaluate Borough Hall for future capital needs. The Sanitation Division improved education and enforcement of trash and recycling regulations. They applied for grants to pay for additional assets to not have to utilize tax dollars. And they continued, sanitation continued through COVID-19 in a structured and efficient manner. The Streets Division continued to perform temporary road repairs. They addressed problematic intersections and unsafe roadway conditions such as eighth and wells. They used liquid fuels dollars to reconstruct, reconstruct this intersection, which included stormwater drainage underneath. And the Parks Division completed a renovation of Aubrey Collins Park, which looks fantastic. And they purchased turf covers for the A field during winter months. Licensing and inspections Department within the Department of Public Services, they reviewed and assisted with permitting for major projects in the borough. It includes Sora, Seven Tower Bridge, Matson Mill, 51 Washington Street, and Septus. So they've been very busy. They implemented new safety protocols for inspections during COVID-19, and they implemented new tenant consent forms for rental properties. The Department of Recreation Services, they updated the community center with new seating and lounge furniture along with padding in the multipurpose room. They adapted department policies, procedures, and programs regarding COVID-19. Despite the pandemic, they offered virtual programming. They offered an in-house summer day camp. And this fall, they implemented and offered a virtual assistance program for school-aged children. Administrative Services implemented an accident and illness plan, implemented an employee safety and health manual. They utilized dividend wellness grants for employee and wellness incentives. They held a flu clinic this fall, and they successfully completed financial audits. Zoning saw the successful transition to a new zoning officer and new operations. That's been a huge positive in 2020. They continue to satisfy FEMA's corrective action plan. They completed zoning conditional use and relief extension hearings. They continue to fuel full review and revision of borough's zoning ordinance and updated the zoning escrow tracking and processing procedures. For community development and grants, they, they successfully completed rehab projects, which is a great resource and service to our community. They closed out and applied for CDBG grants. They closed out the 2018 DEP 902 grant and applied for the 2020 DEP 902 grant. And they submitted the FEMA COVID firefighters grant and were awarded that grant. And they applied for and were awarded the bulletproof vest grant. So it's important to note that these grants in particular, the funds that we get in, are resources that we then don't need to utilize tax dollars for. So great accomplishment there. And last but not least, in terms of communications and special events, we produced two borough newsletters and a recreation activity guide. We planned and coordinated alternate special events due to COVID-19, which included a virtual Halloween costume contest, veteran day highlights. We'll be putting out a virtual Christmas tree lighting, a holiday house decorating contest, Christmas drive-in movie, and a virtual grand menorah lighting. And they served as a resource to residents and business owners for up-to-date information as it pertained to COVID-19 in our community. So a long list of accomplishments, and that's just a sampling. But again, I think those accomplishments highlight how the tax dollars are put to good use. And the next slide I usually use at the end, but I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to highlight the efforts of our emergency management team and collaboration between our elected officials, administration, and borough community over the course of 2020. Again, I usually use this diagram at the end of my budget presentation. However, in 2020, we literally saw this diagram come to life. This year will forever be defined by a pandemic, a health crisis, economic hardship, isolation, quarantine, virtual learning, civil unrest, contentious politics, hurricanes, flooding, disasters, wildfires. The list just goes on and on. The sense of unease is palpable. However, this year will also forever be defined by sacrifice, collaboration, resourcefulness, response, and courage. The commitment from all groups in this diagram made the difference. The bottom line is that Conshohocken is resilient. Our borough continued to operate through the pandemic, and our first responders and emergency management team were essential to people's lives. I personally watched our first responders, normal, everyday coworkers in the office, turn into heroes overnight. We asked a lot, but Conshohocken deserves a lot. Their efforts made a huge difference in the health and safety of our community. More importantly, together, we achieved safety, business continuity, and community assistance. We functioned as a family and have become an even stronger and more united team. So again, these accomplishments are an overview of borough operations from 2020. And I would like to thank all borough staff for their hard work, specifically our emergency management team and our first responders, and our elected officials for all of their guidance and direction during what was a very difficult year. At the same time, I would like to thank the entire borough community. Thank you for demonstrating such resilience and grace during a time of immense pressure. Together, we will continue to weather this storm. I feel that the accomplishments and highlights over the course of a year on a regular basis illustrates that your tax dollars are being put to good use. However, this is specifically true in 2020. I'm immensely proud to be a member of this borough family and a member of our borough team. I am hopeful as we look towards the future. We will continue to serve Conshohocken and assess how we can collectively build a better future for generations to come. So now that we've reviewed 2020, I'm going to shift gears and present the proposed 2021 budget. So to really understand the budget, you start with revenue sources. The primary revenue sources being real estate tax, real estate transfer tax, earned income tax, local service tax, mercantile tax, business privilege tax, and fund balance. And you can see a breakdown on your screen where those tax revenue sources end up. You can see that 16% coming from real estate taxes. There's, those real estate taxes are broken into prior, delinquent, and interim categories. There's transfer tax making up 3%, earned income tax making up 38%, mercantile tax 3%, business privilege tax 24%, LST 3%, and fund balance 14%. One of the major categories of revenue sources is real estate taxes, and I think that's important to understand from both a resident perspective and also a budget perspective. So we're going to focus on that 16% of real estate taxes for a minute. There are two components to the budget. Again, the budget as it relates to the borough's constituents and the budget as it relates to approval from our elected officials. And I think it's important to provide a brief explanation, an example of how we put your tax dollars to work. When we talk about real estate taxes, we are talking about millage. One millage rate is the amount of one, the amount per 1,000 used to calculate taxes on a property. One mil represents $1 in taxes per 1,000 in tax assessed home value. So for example, if your home's assessed value is $108,000, then one mil of tax would equal $108. The borough's total millage rate in 2020 was 31.713. This means the homeowner owes $31.71 in taxes for every 1,000 in tax assessed value. So in this scenario, this property owner would owe $3,425 in property taxes. And where do you get 31.713 mills? Well, it's broken down into four different categories. So the county millage in 2020 was 3.459. The community college millage was .39. Borough mills were 4.5, and the Colonial School District millage was 23.364, totaling the 31.713. So if we put all of that information together, if the homeowner owes the $3,425 in total property tax, what is the amount owed annually to those four different entities? So in this scenario, this homeowner, this resident would owe to the borough $486 annually. They would owe to the county $373 annually, to the community college $42, and to the Colonial School District $2,523.31. And on the next slide, you can see a breakdown exactly of those percentages and where your tax dollars are going. You can see, again, the blue is to the county. The orange shade there is to the community college. The green is to the borough, and the purple is to the Colonial School District. So you might ask, now that I know where my tax dollars are going, what does that breakdown really mean to me as a borough resident? So basically, if we refer back to my previous example, that would mean that this particular property owner would owe approximately $40.50 a month to the borough. And what services do you get for $40.50? You get trash removal, snow plowing and removal, upgraded and maintained parks, 24/7 police protection, fire protection, emergency services, library services, code enforcement, permitting, property maintenance, park programming, road improvements, a community center, and access to free special events, to name a few services you get for your money. $486 a year, or $40.50 a month. That's not a bad deal. So now that we understand millage and real estate as applies to a resident and a property owner, it's also important to understand what these tax dollars mean to the budget itself. So we're going to shift gears a little bit. So the value of one mil, what does it mean for the budget? So the total estimated assessed value of property in the borough of Conshohocken moving into 2021 is 646 million, approximately $647 million. If your millage is 4.5, then your estimated total revenue is around 2.9 million. And then once you account for penalties, delinquent, and discounts, it comes out to real estate being collected around the $2.8 million range. When you have that $2.8 million, you then break it down into specific funds. We at the borough fund a general fund, streetlight, debt service, fire, and library. So there is a tax levy amount that is applied to each fund, and then revenue is assigned to those different funds. So the general fund is around 1.9 million. Streetlight is 104,000. Debt service is at 669,000. Fire is at 78,000, and library is at 52,000. And you can kind of see just a general overview of those funds in particular. Again, once you add up the general, the streetlight, the debt, the fire, and the library, it comes to around 2.8 million. And that's where the real estate taxes are going, and that's how our services are funded through the budget. So now that we have a better understanding of tax revenue and how those tax revenue dollars are utilized, we can move into an overview of the 2021 budget. Most importantly, what we are proposing tonight is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures equalling around 13.9 million. And it's important to note that there is no tax increase proposed for 2021. So if we break down our revenues, again, you can see that a large portion of your revenues comes from the Local Tax Enabling Act, which includes EIT, mercantile, BPT, and LST taxes. Again, the blue on your, on your screen is real, real property taxes. And then you break it down into other operating revenue categories, such as licensing and permits, fines and forfeits, interest, rents, royalties, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services that are based off of each department. We have some unclassified operating revenues, and then of course, fund equity, which is fund balance equating for around 11.5% or 1.6 million. So that's your operating revenues broken out into categories. And then when you break out your operating expenditures in terms of your general fund into categories, again, they're broken into general government, police services, fire and emergency services, licensing and inspections, public services, which includes buildings, sanitation, streets, and parks, culture and recreation, other expenditures, and then inter-fund transfers to reserve funds. And you can, again, on your pie chart on your screen, the red does indicate that there is a large chunk that's going towards police services, and then the other categories as well. It's important to note that specifically the overall increase from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal, fiscal year 2021 is approximately 2.75% with the majority of the increase coming from contractual obligations and pension requirements as it relates to personnel. And I, on the next screen, we take that general, those general fund expenditures and break them out further, designating between personnel costs, operating expenditures, and inter-fund transfers. Again, you can see on the blue portion of the chart, those are personnel costs. They equate to around 9 million of your total $13 million budget, or 65%. And then operating expenditures are around 4 million or 28% with inter-fund transfers again going to reserve funds of about a million. And it's important to, to note that of that 65% of, that equate to personnel costs, 56% of those 65% costs are made up of police personnel costs. So again, just a breakdown of overall general fund expenditures and then major cost centers. So you might ask, what's the justification for these proposed costs? So I think a good way of justifying those proposed costs is to look at some 2021 budget highlights and some 2021 departmental goals. So to start with the budget highlights, again, there is no tax increase. There is a continued investment into reserve funds and an OPEB trust, which is aimed at sustaining the financial viability of the borough for the long term. There is an investment into public safety. So in terms of fire services, there are part-time firefighters, a fire stipend program, and fire rescue boats and equipment for police services. There are police vehicles and body cameras. And I think in 2020 in particular, our police officers did a fantastic job at keeping our borough residents safe, especially with the different protests that happened in the borough. So that's a, again, we are investing into the public safety component. There is a continued apportionment to Narberth ambulance. And in terms of emergency services, there is funds allocated for PPE gear, emergency operation centers, and, and other storage items needed. But again, I think that 2020 highlighted how important our emergency management team is. And a huge thank you to all of them for keeping us safe and healthy over the course of 2020. And I know that they will continue to do so moving into 2021. There is a continued investment into public services with updated equipment focused on safety, and a continued investment into recreation services for the improved quality of life improvements and additions like an outdoor fitness court and spin bikes at the community center. There are matching funds for grants and capital engineering projects. And then last but not least, the 2021 budget specifically has a conservative planning for the future built in as it relates to COVID-19. So what does that mean? So while the borough will continue to plan for the future, unfortunately, we also must be conservative as the fiscal impacts of COVID-19 are still unknown and evolving. The borough relies on a healthy economy for a large portion of our annual revenue. And as the crisis continues to unfold, the impact on the borough's bottom line will be driven by revenue generated from income, wages, and real estate. An important factor will be whether or not our industries and businesses were exposed to coronavirus-related employment declines. And all of these factors will affect revenues available to meet the health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors, and could affect long-term capital planning timelines. It's our expectation that the borough will feel the economic effects of COVID-19 over the course of the next year, which is why we did budget for a significant, we did not budget for a significant increase in annual revenues. So while we fully expect to be up and operating as we have during the entire pandemic, So while we fully expect to be up and operating as we have during the entire pandemic, as it came to looking towards our revenues for 2021, we just, we conservatively budgeted a very small increase in those revenues, so we can ensure that we are, we are providing service to the residents in our community, but doing so in a fiscally responsible manner. And then fiscal planning for the future will be adjusted accordingly as we continue to monitor the situation. So again, these are specific budget highlights that are built into the 2021 budget. And in addition to the highlights, we also have a sampling of our departmental 2021 goals, and the department directors, when they're developing their goals, they, they establish a SMART goal program, meaning that the goals are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. So just a quick sampling of those 2021 departmental goals. For the police department, they will be implementing the usage of body worn cameras and publishing a policy related to those cameras. They will be equipping and training their officers in rapid response for civil unrest, updating and publishing policies, including critical policies, increasing the clearance rate of property crimes using DNA technology, and producing a yearly departmental report. For the fire department, they will be utilizing two new Swift water rescue boats and planning and preparing for large-scale planned events and incidents in collaboration with the police, fire police, and EMS. For emergency management, they will be creating an emergency operations center and creating an emergency management storage area. Of course, they will be doing everything to continue to keep our community safe, and they will continue to educate leaders on how to handle larger scale incidents and events, and focus on emergency response protocols related to larger scale incidents utilizing the NIM structure. For public services, again, we have different divisions within the public services department. So for public, the building department will develop a comprehensive maintenance program for all occupied tenant spaces at Borough Hall, and they will finalize the installation of the slide gate up at the Seventh Avenue garage to safeguard access to the property. The sanitation division will continue to apply for grants to pay for additional assets so we can provide more services to our community, and the streets division will continue to work with our engineer on a comprehensive road program for the future. The parks division will make general improvements to the B field, and they will install security surveillance cameras for borough property and resident safety in all borough parks. For licensing and inspections, they will review and consider ordinance revisions as needed, and they will continue to ensure the smooth operation of all major development projects in the borough. The Department of Recreation, they will continue with improvements to the community center with the addition of spin bikes. They will enhance amenities at Sucklift Park with the outdoor fitness court and filling in cracks of basketball courts, and they will continue to offer recreation programs, events, and trips. Administrative services will provide employee safety and wellness clinics and trainings. They will continue to organize our archived files and finalize the restructuring of the borough's archive file room. Zoning will continue the revision of the zoning ordinance. They will complete the organization of archived zoning files, which was a huge undertaking. They will undergo staff and administrative training and implement enforcement and violation tracking processes. The Community Development and Grants Department, their goal is to complete around seven to nine rehab projects, to execute the 2020 CDBG grant, and to begin the curb grant project with CDBG funding. And last but not least, the Communication and Special Events Department, their goal is to look at social media and the creation of a potential policy and to develop, to develop tools and resources for website management, and to finalize procedures that pertain to mobile food vendors during special events. I know that is a lot of information, but again, we believe that the budget highlights and the 2021 departmental goals presented this evening provide justification for the dollars that we are proposing to spend in 2021. So you might ask, what happens now? What happens now is that on November 18th, on your agenda will be to consider authorizing the advertisement of the proposed budget. That budget will be posted in the lobby of Borough Hall and on the borough website. Public notices will go out, and the tax levy ordinance, again, no tax increase proposed for the 2021 budget will be advertised. And then on your agenda on December 16th, at your regularly scheduled council meeting, there will be a vote to consider adopting the 2021 budget. So now that we know next steps in the budget process, I would just, you know, last but not least, I would just like to conclude by stating that we as administrators are honored to serve the borough of Conshohocken, not just the elected officials, but also the residents, the business owners, and community groups. It's our belief that the borough will continue to evolve forward through this proposed 21, 21, 2021 budget, along with collaboration from all facets of our community. We have hope for the future, and we will continue to strive to enhance the quality of life for all in Conshohocken. And I, I do think it's important to point out that we are honored to serve the borough of Conshohocken, and I hope that our actions, our proactive actions taken during 2021 truly highlights how honored we are to serve you. So at this point, I would just like to thank you for your time and also for your consideration of the 2021 proposed budget. It's an honor to work diligently every day to make Conshohocken the place to live, work, and play. And at this point, if anyone on council has any questions that I can answer, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Stephanie, I have one question.
Yeah.
Under community development, you said that they were going to hope to rehab seven to nine properties?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't 79.
No, I'm sorry, it's.
No, no.
Yeah.
I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Clarification that it is, the, the aim, the goal is to do seven to nine rehab projects over the course of the year.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation, thanks so much for all the hard.
Thanks, Jane.
Steph, it's Tina.
It's Tina.
I'd just like to thank you and your team for putting together the presentation and the budget, and really looking at putting structure around how we move forward. The idea of SMART goals and having each department have something to work towards that they've chosen that are important and to put forward to us to approve shows us that we're all working in sync right now, and that really our community safety is in the forefront as well as a lot of the community amenities that we want to continue to provide. So kudos to you and your team for really being able to work collaboratively with us to make this a great place to live, work, and play.
Thanks, Tina.
I just want to say thank you for making a budget that's understandable. I, since I am not a really good budget person, it's easy to follow, and I appreciate that.
Very welcome, Anita.
Anyone else on council? I would like to acknowledge that Mayor Aronson did join us in the beginning of the buzzed presentation, and then I would also like to thank you, Steph, and the administration, everyone who works for us in the borough. I mean, this year has been such an unprecedented year, and it just continues to be one, and the way that everyone in the borough stepped up to, for the safety of the residents, and just to ensure, and everything for everybody has been amazing to watch, and it has not gone unnoticed by any of us. We sincerely appreciate all of it. So, okay, anyone, you're welcome, anyone else? Okay. So with that, there is really nothing else on the special budget meeting, so we will go down to council member and mayor matters, if anyone has anything. I think most of us just basically did that, but I will start with Mayor Aronson.
So Carlene, is this different from at our council meeting matters?
Yes, we will do it again at our council. This is just specifically for this meeting.
I would just say a, a big thank you to, to council and to administration for, as always, having such an open dialogue about all the priorities in the borough. You know, it really shows that we're listening not just to each other, but to the community. So thank all of you for such a welcoming and open process.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Mr. Stokely?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Steph, the borough manager, and all the staff that worked for us, and the police, the fire, and the emergency management people. Thank you very much and good job.
Thank you, Mr. Stokely. Ms. Barton?
I already said my piece. Thanks for the wonderful budget, and thank you for your hard work and the staffs.
Okay. Ms. Flanagan?
I would just agree with Anita. I think the budget for a non-accountant is very easy to grasp, and I hope our residents take the time to look and see where your tax dollars really go, and value all of the services you get on a weekly and daily basis for your tax dollars. So thanks again to the administration and Stephanie.
Mr. Tino?
I would just like to echo what all the other council people and the mayor said. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ike?
I'd just like to thank Steph and her crew, they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Vice President Sokolowski?
Nothing further.
Okay. Brittany, do we have any public comments?
No, we did not receive any written comments.
Okay. Okay, with that, I think we can call, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need me to get off?